All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the town of New Canaan Town Council meeting. It's Wednesday, September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is seven oh four P M. Welcome back. We haven't seen everybody since July, so hopefully you guys had a great summer. Now we'll start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance. We've got troop seventy here. Do you guys come up and lead us in the pledge? Thank you, guys. Why don't you stand for a minute and tell us what you've been up to?
Um, the last event we had was camp out here at New Canaan. That was kind of getting new scouts who come to like acclimate, they're camping and everything. Um, upcoming, yeah, road sports camp out was really cool. I'm glad you threw on that jacket too. And then hopefully more of your projects can bring yourself to it.
Thank you very much. Great work, guys. Thanks for coming out. Yeah. Thank you. All right, uh, let's call the roll. Mark.
Sure. Robin Bates Mason.
Here.
Rita Patino.
Yes.
She's gonna be out.
Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Mark Jimski present. Steve Carl.
Here.
Luke Kaufman.
Here.
Perfect timing. Mike Mora.
He is, uh, he's on his, as open house for his kids, but he's gonna join us at about seven thirty.
Maria Naughton.
Here.
Kimberly Norton.
Here.
Hillary Ormon.
Here.
Christina Ross.
Yeah.
Penny Young.
She was gonna join by Zoom, but maybe, maybe. Yeah, she was in Europe. Okay, we have a form. Thank you, Mark. All right, minutes. Uh, need to approve the minutes for the following regular meeting was July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Hopefully I really had a chance to read those over. Any deletions, corrections, additions? Okay, uh, those are approved by unanimous consent. And now on to public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the town council on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Speakers are required to provide their name and street address. Comments will be limited to two to three minutes, subject to numbers of speakers. Would anybody like to address the council tonight? Anybody in Zoom?
No one from Zoom.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. Next item, item.
Mind if I propose that we amend the agenda?
Oh, yeah, we need to do that. Sorry, Tom. Go ahead.
You wanna, so I propose that we amend the agenda to formally, uh, appoint or recommend a town council representative to the affordable housing committee?
That's great. We need a second? Okay, discussion. I think we should put it on because we're trying to move through the agenda quickly to get the board of ed and the police out of here. So let's put it on. We'll do committee reports. And that item after the playhouse. So let's do that sort of number ten and move the committee reports back to eleven. Great. All right. Yeah. Uh, who is the second on that? My, uh, Mark, all in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. All right, now, oh, go ahead.
I may like to add another item to the agenda.
Okay.
And as for the appointment to some for, um, a candidate to the body committee.
Okay. Um, second. Discussion. All right, um, all in favor? Uh, that looks like. That looks like it's, it moves. You need four, so. Oh, you do? Okay, um, let's raise our hands again. All in favor of putting it on. Let's put it on. All right, that's, uh, everybody but, uh, Robin and Mark. And we'll put that on after the affordable housing before, so that'll be number eleven. Or twelve. Now we're getting lengthy. We're gonna be here all night. Okay. Um, going on, number four, public hearing. Notice is hereby given. Uh, that public hearing at town council, seven P M. It's now seven oh eight, uh, September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, we are going to talk about, uh, sub, obviously subsequent to section seven dash one sixty-three of the Connecticut statutes to hear public comment on an agreement between the town of New Canaan and the First Presbyterian Church of New Canaan to exchange an equal amount of comparable property between the New Canaan nature center property located at one forty-four Owen Oak Ridge Road and the First Presbyterian Church property located at one seventy-eight Owen Oak Ridge Road. So with that, uh, we take public comment or do you want a presentation first? Okay. Yeah, okay. All right, so the public hearing can be open and closed. Obviously, if, you know, there are members of the public. If there are questions or anything, we're happy to address those, um, after the presentation, but we will have a presentation on this. Uh, after, let's see, that's item number eight on the agenda. So next up, we'll do the first selectmen update. Kevin?
Good evening. All right, see you all. Welcome back. I hope you have a good August. Okay, I'll give you the same update I gave to the board of finance last night, basically. Um, wave any bathrooms? For the third month, I'm saying they're almost done. There's supply chain issues with some fixtures and stuff, but they're virtually done. Um, and the way of an elevator, as I said, be reported before is underway. Um, doing the basement work and building, beginning to build a shaft, et cetera. So, um, wave any service area, as you can see outside is underway and probably near completion. Um, that's in cooperation with the Wave Any Park Conservancy. Um, lap and center C H P machine still sits there waiting for ever source gas to bring gas into the park, which was promised many, many moons ago. And they now promise before the snow flies, so. Um, and it will happen. Two twenty home, um, the board of ed is in. We've had a meeting this afternoon, our monthly meeting with the superintendent, and they're very pleased with their new boat and Viking Construction did a great job. Bill's here, could elaborate on that. If you want to hear more about the, you toured it, I guess, at the end of July or August before they moved in. And, um, the library has taken another two million dollars on their construction loan facility. Probably will not take more on the construction part, but they have indicated they plan to come in with a request for a nineteen thirteen building, uh, loan. And we've been discussing that for many months, um, as far as having a separate loan facility. We'll bring that probably two weeks to the board of selectmen and then to you in Au- in October after the board is financed. Uh, the new program, we, we had a meeting last week with, um, Silver Hill Hospital. Weston, as you know, joined us and, um, the program, uh, has had several people since, uh, since the summer. Um, they had a total about like a hundred and twenty-four last year, and that includes not only New Canaan residents, but a few residents from other towns who have come and paid the price, uh. But, uh, we're very pleased with the program. It continues to be, uh, very well received. We're now focusing on trying to get Wilton and Westport to join us. Um, parking, um, you may have read, we extended the, uh, parking permits for ninety days, so the renewal will be not August. Um, not September first, but December first. We are really trying to figure out where people want to park. The lumberyard is filling up, probably closer to three quarters now. Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Um, well, uh, Calum Hills filling up, maybe approaching three quarters. But we were probably gonna come out with a survey to ask people how they're we're curious about how many people went to Darien and haven't come back and planned to stay. The lot, the private lot down in Darien is nearly full still, so it's in case the people are parking, parking down there. Anyway, so parking is a mystery and, and the, um, uh, before we sent our renewals, we're gonna try to figure out. We, we have seven hundred people that could potentially want to park in the, in the lumberyard lot. Uh, because we have three hundred people on the deferred waitlist. Because of COVID. We have it. Not the waitlist, deferred suspension list, whatever we call it. We have two hundred on the waitlist still, so. Um, mainly people in Talmadge Hill that want to move to the lumberyard. Anyway, that's, uh, all in motion. The utilities commission, you're gonna hear update tonight from the from Rich and Sven, perhaps, uh, affordable housing committee. We plan to make appointments in two weeks. Um, Tiger could tell you a lot about all the roads are gonna be repaved. He, he told the board of selectmen yesterday. All the streets off of, uh, South Avenue, basically that were disturbed by the aquarium, uh, ever source gas. Um, and also by the ever sort of the aquarium water pipes, uh, so lots of road paving before the snow flies, right, Tiger? And that's really the completion of, of the, the gas installation from four years ago. Um, our revel date is ten days away, October first, and Sebby, our assessor, is, uh, projecting we're gonna go over ten billion dollars. Which will mean our bill rate will go down back into the thirteens, which we number two or three in the state. And, uh, so I'd be happy to answer questions. That's kind of what I.
Questions for Ken?
Was that ten million or ten billion?
A billion. That's one house, ten.
I didn't know. I didn't know if you meant ten million over the last rebound.
Ten billion, up from eight point two, I think, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and you discussed the, the, uh, it was interesting to hear you discuss the, the car tax impact, you know, how would that, how would that affect?
Interesting thing is, this is all driven by real estate. Yet cars have the same mill rate. So you're going from eighteen down to thirteen something with cars. So people are gonna really benefit. And I, is Josh not here? You know, people are gonna benefit on their cars, but it's gonna be pushed off to the real estate side of the equation.
Right, so they'll pay more. They may, they may pay more real estate, but they'll pay less.
Yeah, but it's gonna be really good for cars.
Yeah.
Some people pay thirty, have a bill rate of thirty-eight in the state. Actually, I think the state capped it. The legislation this past year, you can't have a bill rate for cars more than thirty or something, and so.
It's abusive.
Any word from MTA on the five percent reduction in?
I haven't, you know, the article that I read, you know, they're gonna come out with another press release with details, but we haven't seen the details yet, or they're just
off peak. Yeah.
Yeah, the, I mean, the danger is we're not gonna have regular service during the day compared to the, just to express the, uh, computer commuter trains. And I think they're also hitting the southeast corridor rather than the main line, but, um.
Anything else? All right. Oh, Maria, do you have one?
Can I ask about the traffic study on Conrad Road and?
Tiger's here.
Didn't you just approve the?
Yeah, well, again, I was on the agenda. I don't know the details. I just approved it, so.
Tiger, do you want to set the dress up?
Good evening. Um, so the, uh, traffic circle, the mini roundabout, I guess we call it, on Conrad and, um, Whiffle Tree. We have an interesting situation at Conrad and Whiffle Tree. We just, um, had a large discussion at the police commission this evening with a number of the residents, so the commission could hear it as well. We have a, uh, threefold problem. We have an intersection problem with Whiffle Tree and Conrad whereby the intersection is quite wide. So while Whiffle Tree is stop controlled, um, the rest of Conrad is not, but since it's wide open, people tend to roll through the stop sign, and it comes to a point where who has the right of way, okay? Where in essence Conrad does, Whiffle Tree doesn't, it's secondary to it, but there was a problem. So we started looking at that, and then the larger problem came about whereby traffic is being diverted by ways off of the merit onto our, onto our roads and then being diverted off of Gertie's onto Conrad. Because they can save a minute by coming up Conrad, making a quick left hand turn on a South Avenue, and then a right hand turn and then get back on the merit. So volumes have increased on, um, on Conrad as well as speeds, because in the afternoon now, in the morning, you have people shooting it early before the volume builds, and then in the afternoon, you have people coming the opposite direction. So we have a speed, volume, and intersection problem. So we, uh, we had Hardisty and Hanover come in and take a look at the intersection and the, and the road itself, um, last year on a preliminary discussion. And they came back with three options. One was to, to narrow down the intersection of Whiffle Tree, but that would make Conrad primary, and that would not do anything for speed and volume, probably exacerbate it a little bit. So then the second one was to put in a mini roundabout, and the third was to put in a standard size roundabout. The standard side roundabout would be basically fill our right of way. It'll be almost too large. In essence, too large for that area. The mini would do the exact same thing, only be a lot smaller of a footprint, much more in keeping with the neighborhood. And then it would allow, uh, safer passage to the intersection for all three legs, Conrad both, both directions and Whiffle Tree coming in. Um, and then secondary aspect to it is that it would slow speeds, because you would have to then navigate through the, through the roundabout, and then hopefully as you headed up Conrad towards South Avenue, you would accelerate to a more modest speed instead of cruising through and then continuing, you know, and then accelerating through. So we're hoping that with that, it'll be a traffic calming measure, both speed and volume, because then at that point in time, if we start to make people slow down and have to navigate through this mini roundabout, maybe they'll stay on Gertie's. We have a secondary study going on for the intersection of Gertie's and South Avenue at the traffic light. Because it's our feeling that with the traffic light timing should be changed in order to give more time to the Gertie's road leg. The state, since it's a state light, wants to make one twenty-four primary and make sure one twenty-four is free flowing all the time. That's what they do throughout all of their roads, um, throughout the state, but we have to prove to them that there's a, there's an issue at the one, at, at South and Gertie's. Because of the backup to then make them see if we can't change the timing, give them the revised timings. We have two different studies going on. One for a mini roundabout, the intersection of Whiffle Tree and Conrad, and then a secondary look at the traffic light to see if we can't get more people to push through that traffic light, then it would reduce the volume on Conrad. So we get little, you know, reduction on, on Conrad as well. So every, every little bit's gonna help, um, in the area. So right now, we tasked Hardisty and Hanover, um, with a contract to come back with a preliminary design, it's a three-phase, um, contract. Preliminary design, final design, then construction and bidding. So to come back after the preliminary design, so then we can visit with the neighborhood again, visit with the police commission, make sure that this is an avenue or a road that we want to go down, no pun intended, um, and, uh, and then proceed to the final design and then construction and bidding.
So the, the neighborhood, uh, the residents are looking, they're, they're wishing for a one-way? Is that what they were?
They were looking for anything that would help. At one point in time, they were looking for it to be turned into a cul-de-sac, um, but that was not gonna happen. The, uh, only because it would, it would basically, in essence, force a lot more traffic down the Whiffle Tree and then into the, behind the Y. Uh, so that was one of the requests. Um, they've had several requests. They've also asked for possibility of speed humps. Um, through the area. Right now, we've been not putting speed humps anywhere in town for a very, a number of reasons. One, from emergency services standpoint. Two, from a maintenance standpoint, from the DPW aspect of it, and then the third would be from a, an aesthetic point of view, because to put in a speed hump, it requires, uh, a considerable amount of signage and striping along with it. And then the secondary aspect of that is that you actually, while you reduce the speed at the speed hump, you increase the segmental speed. So you would then slow down to go over the hump, speed up to go to the next one, slow down and go over the next one, speed up to go to the next one. So the segmental speed increases. So while it, it may seem to be a good idea, at present, we don't have any in town. We've been trying to, to hold firm on that idea. So we're looking at other avenues, other ways to, to calm the traffic. Both say, you know, increase the, the safety at the intersection, calm the traffic, slow the speeds, and then, and then, uh, reduce the volume. So it's a, it's quite a large task for that one small area. The other aspect that we discussed was, uh, the possibility of including sidewalks, because then that would make it pedestrian safer to walk along the road, because one of the problems, they have problems with speed, that goes down to.
Because all the kids are crossing, right? That's a walking.
There's a, uh, well, there's a school bus stop right in the middle of it, um, which is a concern for the parents to try to get their children across the street. And then the majority of them or some of them walk home after school, because behind the Y is all sidewalked up until the point where you get to Conrad, and Conrad doesn't have a sidewalk. So in looking at it, the P O C D, our plan of conservation and development, didn't show it, but it's interesting why it didn't. I don't understand why it was necessarily omitted, since the rest of the neighborhood, so to speak, has sidewalks. Um, so then they were looking at the possibility of extending it from Whiffle Tree up Conrad and then connecting back down South Avenue to the, where we finished its survey at present. So there's a couple of different options on the table for them. Um, we discussed the, uh, the option of putting in edge lines, white edge striping. The road's only twenty feet wide, so it's very narrow. Um, and the M U T C D is basically would like you to have two ten-foot lanes, so the stripe would be right on the edge. You could theoretically come down by one foot on either side to a two nine-foot lanes with, so an eighteen feet right away in the middle. Um, there's shown to be a two to three mile per hour speed reduction in studies for that. We had the exact same thing happen on Main Street when we put in the sidewalks and put the edge lines in there. Um, so the thought would be to do that. That gives a little bit of a refuge area for pedestrians walking. Um, you know, it's just a stripe, so it's not safe, not, you know, it doesn't increase the safety, but if we reduce the speeds, that helps with safety.
Um, I'm just wondering, reduce the speed one way versus traffic circle? Which one's safer?
The one way, well, the, the one way is not necessarily gonna say that you're reducing the speed, to be perfectly honest with you. Um, it would reduce the volume. It would cause concern for everyone that's on the street now, because it would change their travel patterns dramatically and force them to go through an intersection they might not necessarily want to go through, or force them go through a, a neighborhood that they didn't need to go to before. So even the first neighbor would be impacted because their driveway is off of, uh, off of, um, Conrad instead of off of South. So, um, we've looked at one-way streets in other locations, Chichester, for example, and we, we went to the townspeople with it, went to the residents with it. It was a fifty-fifty split directly down the middle to the number, um, fifty-four, fifty against, and, uh, and then we asked them about, uh, and then the subsequent thing was to pave the road and fifty were four and fifty were against. Interesting, you know, the opposite fifty. So the, uh, um, so we did look at that, but we don't think that at, at present, it's a, it's an option worth pursuing. The, uh, the traffic consultant didn't either at the time. It wasn't one of the, one of the things that they recommended. Um, so right now, we're looking, uh.
We'll know what, what the decision is.
About two months or more, we're gonna have a, have a, have a thought, and then we can certainly come back and give you an idea as to where we are. Um, at that point, but, you know, we'd have to, what we plan to do is meet with the neighbors, meet with the commission, and then if we come back to the council, we can certainly come back to the council.
Okay, but definitely want to keep us posted. Thank you, Tiger. Appreciate it. All right, uh, got one more?
Yeah, Kevin, would you mind giving us an update on God's Acre?
God's Acre.
In what regard?
Who owns it? Has that been settled?
Uh, why don't we have this conversation, uh, and a agreement we signed, I think it made the news, did it make the news?
Um, Yeah, I think it was in the news, but it's, it, they came to an agreement where it was basically Switzerland, I guess.
We've agreed with the congressional church to, uh, not argue about it and just, um, maintain it and, uh, and, you know, have it, have any discussions we need to have about any different use than it currently has. So that agreement is available. I thought, I thought it was publicized.
Okay, because I researched it, and there's a book that the church put out in which they admit that it was gifted to the town to be a public park.
I'd like to know that, you know, but honestly, that didn't come up in all the research we did, but I'd be happy to talk about it.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, item number six, we have the utilities commission update. Former stars of the town council. Rich Townsend, welcome, Sven England. Odd to see you on that side of the table, I will say that.
Well, I hope it's gonna be more comfortable over here than. Well, we'll just get, we'll give you, uh, Sven and I will work on giving you a little update here. Uh, we've had an organizational meeting, and we've had three other meetings, and we canceled one meeting. So we've had a lot of meeting, uh, a lot of meeting work going on. Uh, during the organizational meeting, uh, we elected officials. Uh, we elected Sven, uh, vice chairman, myself chairman, and Joe Gazetti is the secretary. Uh, and in the meeting after that, we, we worked on how we were going to split the, the, uh, the commission up and who would be responsible for what. And the way we sit right now is we divided our work into areas of inquiry. Uh, and it's because we figure we're going to have a lot of projects, we're gonna want to look at stuff and then bring it back to a full commission. And so the intent there was to put leaders of different areas in place that can call on any members of the commission to do work and then come back to the commission. So we anticipate we'll have probably more commission meetings and probably no subcommittee meetings, uh, so that we can be more transparent with everything we see.
It's thought leaders for, you know, for the individual areas, right? Um, obviously, all nine of us can chime in on any of the, uh, anything that items that we're just about to let you know.
Right, and, and the way we're, the way we're organized is we, uh, the first one is probably the, the most urgent one that we're working on, which is two-way communications, which includes cellular phones, but includes everything else in, in two-way communications. Uh, and that is Krista Cannon is, uh, the thought leader on that. Power and, uh, power primarily ever source and that interface, uh, Mike Collins is a thought leader on that. He has a very deep, uh, history with ever source, having worked there for, uh, many years. Uh, water and internet are together with aquarium, uh, internet, because quite frankly, internet, while it feels very much like a utility, is really not very much of a utility. It's, it, it, there's pretty good competition, et cetera, and while all of us find it perhaps uh, confusing and irritating, uh, I'm not sure that there's a lot that goes along with utility with that, but we're gonna look at it for sure, okay? Because it's, there's no doubt it's one of the most important things in town in terms of businesses and everything else. So we, we're not downplaying its importance, but it, it's interesting, because it really is a free market here. We got people all over. Uh, and, uh, Bernie Clark is gonna be working on that. Uh, and then we've got Karim, uh, Karim Kahar is, is working on cross measurements. So what are some of the key factors we can look at across towns and across the utilities to assure how our town is performing relative to the other towns in our area? Are we getting short-changed by some of the utilities? Are we not being short-changed? And Karim has a big background in measurements on utility, so he, this is, it's, it's a perfect thing for him. Uh, and then Sven is emergency management. Uh, so, so these are the thought leaders and, and the other folks are, uh, are, are gonna be assigned specific projects or step up and do whatever, whatever else comes on. We have done, we have, uh, requested input from the selectmen as well as from the town council. It hasn't, I didn't send a note to everybody, but I sent it to your august leader. Uh, and we're getting some feedback back on where would you like us to, uh, to focus, because quite frankly, I think our charter is, we're your hands, right? We're your hands in utilities and we're the hands of the select. Uh, so we're, we're ready to go on anything, and we, we can't do anything, but we can study everything and come back with recommendations. And, and that's what we intend to do. Uh, if we take a look at, at the current and early focus that we've had, uh, cellular coverage is clearly the early focus, uh, with the West School, with the West School Tower still in play. Uh, and while some people don't really think it's still in play, it, it is still in play. We still have offers to be able to, uh, to fund the West School Tower and put it up. Uh, the current, we, with respect to cellular coverage as a whole, uh, we've tried to set a base on what's the current strategy for, for coverage expansion in town. Uh, and we've talked to Tom Teslick, the prior chairman, uh, to, at length on what he thought it was. We brought Kevin in and Kevin chatted with the entire utility commission and took all of our questions on what it is, and it became very clear on what, what it is. And if anybody's curious, you can ask us when I'm done with this little pitch, but, uh, yeah, the, there, there seems to be agreement on what the current, the current strategy is. Doesn't mean we have to keep that strategy, but I think we've got a good base on the current strategy. Our focus right now is to try and get a level set on what the coverage map looks like, uh, for New Canaan. There's one thing that is clearer than anything else, and that is there are no coverage maps that have any credibility in the nation, and the FCC would agree with that, by the way. Uh, and they're busy trying to get coverage map standardized and, and, uh, put some rigor in them. Uh, so we have, for the past, for the past two meetings, uh, we have, uh, laid out work plans, and Kevin's been working hard at finding number one more bidders that will do the job, because there seems to be a dearth of bidders that really want to do drive-by tests. Uh, a lot of the, a lot of the cellular companies do them themselves. Uh, or a lot of them, I think our citizens would say, these guys, these guys are, uh, conflicted because they work for the cell phone companies, or they work for here, and so we're trying to be sensitive to those topics. And, and while the actual purchase of the, the size of the purchase of a professional, a professional contract of less than fifty thousand dollars can be single sourced according to our procurement, uh, process here. Uh, we're, we're not gonna do that. We're gonna take a look at everything we can find, and so Kevin has looked at a whole bunch of different companies, and a lot of companies just don't do it. Uh, or it costs too much to have it done. Our, our intent is, we canceled, we canceled our meeting yesterday. Uh, because we were supposed to do a review on who we would have do it and come to you with a recommendation. Uh, and we're gonna, we're moving that meeting to next Tuesday. And I know I just talked to Kevin. We got a proposal in today from one of the new people that we've, uh, turned over here. Uh, and so hopefully we'll make some progress and we'll be back with a recommendation next Tuesday. But you know what? If we don't have enough information, we'll cancel it again and we'll move it again. Because we're gonna make sure we get it done right. It is gonna be a base, and it's important that every, that it has credibility with the town and with the residents. Other, other areas of focus for, uh, for cellular is what are the town goals in cellular coverage? What do we want to be? Uh, you know, when you take a look at utilities in our town as a whole, not all the residents have the same utilities. You know, I've got city water. A lot of people here don't have city water, right? Uh, a lot of people don't, I don't, uh, have garbage pickup, right? Nobody has garbage pickup, just as a random example. Uh, a lot of people don't, uh, don't uh, have garbage pickup, right? Nobody has garbage pickup, just as a random example, and not everybody has septic. So there, there can be differences in, in utility availability and when we buy our houses, we understand that. And as we go through this, I think one of the big questions that everybody's gonna have to ask is how involved is the town going to be in the utility decision? And for example, on, on cellular, uh, a big piece of our strategy is to use town land. So a big question is, do we wanna continue to use town land to put towers on? And at the end, because.
And the because is the same thing that Tom told us years and years ago. Um, that is Tom Teslick told us that we put a tower on town property, we have leverage with the tower company, we can set the height, we can locate the position. If we don't do that and things go out to the private market, then the first private landowner can then create a deal with the tower company, put up any tower they want, looking anything like they wanted to on that piece of property. And there's thing one we can do about it. We can sue them.
Is my, is my not on?
No, you just gotta share.
Oh, oh, there we go.
Yeah, we can hear, but maybe not at home. Give me some slack. That's good enough. That's good enough. Yeah. You know, we can, you can sue them, but you know, it goes to the State Siting Committee and we know what their priority is. Okay, so that's, that's sort of the because. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, that's, thank, thank you for adding that. That's a, it's a big question that we need to, need to answer. Uh, and another big question we need to answer relative to towers is, do we need towers for emergency response? Uh, and that's not an obvious, there's not an obvious answer to that. Uh, because there's, there are a lot of people, not a lot, but there's people in town that don't have nine-one-one service if, if the, if, if uh, the internet is out, right? Because they're so, they don't have cellular and without cellular, doesn't matter who cellular is, but it's gotta be some cellular hits their house. If they don't have it, they don't have nine-one-one. And that's the thing that Russell Kimes is most concerned about, quite frankly.
And we have, and we have.
A, and we have uh, uh, responding vehicles, police fire and ambulances, responding vehicles. And they also require uh, cell service for the current levels of uh, service that they do provide. Um, you know, we talked with ambulance, there are blackout spots. Um, they would prefer to be able to have cell service. There are a lot of reasons why that needs to be done. It also needs to be done privately. Um, right now, our radio system is open. Anybody can go out and buy a Bearcat and listen to uh, all the voice traffic out there. Um, that does not support HIPAA. Okay, the ambulance does need to be able to talk to emergency room doctors in order to get uh, in order to uh, send information for the doctor to evaluate, to know when they can um, stop resuscitations. Not to put too fine a point on it.
Just to kind of conclude this and not, not do an education session on cell phones. Uh, it, the, one of the things that we are concerned about is that we do, they do a technology assessment. So we understand where we think we wanna be in five years with respect to coverage and how we would get there. And all, and be able to look through all the different technologies that are available. We don't have the skills to do that. We gotta figure out how to do that. But the people that come and talk to us, the, the complaint the residents have is, these guys sell towers. Well, they're not gonna tell us that we're gonna, we should put small cells in. We need some kind of assessment that projects out into the future. And that needs to cover small cells, it needs to cover satellites, it needs to cover, it needs to cover towers. Uh, and we don't have that done, but that clearly needs to be on the agenda. Uh, and the other, the other thing that is really important, and I think you guys have kicked this to us, and that is uh, we need to do an assessment of health. And put it to bed once and for all. What do we think is a town? Do we wanna have uh, cellular service and what levels of power do we wanna have? Uh, and what do we agree is a town? This is, this is what we're gonna do. Uh, that's one of the main things that people seem to be complaining about. Uh, the other thing we're working on along with the cellular coverage is we are gonna do a, a resident survey uh, for uh, for cellular coverage and satisfaction with cellular. We're working on that right now. Kevin had started that with the Blue Gray people. Uh, we're looking at a couple other vendors and we're clearly gonna look at all the questions, but we're gonna, we will do that. To move on from, to move on from cell phones, we've got an Aquarian presentation that we're gonna get in the commission in November. Uh, we've got, just to have them bring us up to date on what they're doing to us and what they, what they need from us. Uh, and we have one other citizen group is working on, is working uh, on the resiliency of our power system specifically. Uh, and this has been going on for a couple of years, just a, an individual uh, citizen working on it. And uh, I think it's gaining some momentum and it's really quite interesting. Uh, and one of the things that's very interesting to ever source is increasing the resiliency and the reliability of our, of our network and our, and our grid. And we would like to participate in that. Last, last thing is we will become in, in, included in part of the new P O C D work that's going on because utilities needs to be part of it. What, what utilities we're planning on having? Are we planning on having what we have? Are we gonna change something? So we're gonna participate in that. So with that, Sven, did I forget anything here?
No, you know, it's been quite a lot of work, you know, uh, trying to find us, you know, other bidders for this drive test. Uh, you know, if you go on the internet and you sit there and you go.
Can you move the mic? Just so, sorry.
You go on the internet and you ask for RFI testing in it with a lot of places, you know, um, that do uh, you know, U L and C E compliance for um, for, for things like this, you know, to make sure that they're not emitting a lot of electromagnetic radiation, which messes up other pieces of equipment, you know, in your home or your business. Um, what we're looking for are drive tests and apparently it's uh, become more difficult to find people to do it. Most of the people are based on doing physics modeling. Okay, I have an antenna and it's putting out power. And you know, we know how high it is off the ground. And we can tell you, you know, exactly, you know, what the radius is that that's gonna be. And uh, as Karim has pointed out to us, however, it doesn't uh, really talk to us about a three D situation is probably less accurate. Where we have rolling hills, valleys, you know, the little dead spots that we see in town right now. So that needs to be uh, taken care of because uh, we really want to get uh, a baseline so that we can understand exactly what our coverage is. We haven't done it. And models are probably not sufficiently believed because we're not in Nebraska.
There you go. That's all right. Uh, questions for, we've now, many of us have either attended or watched your meeting so far. And, and I have to say, you know, so far you guys have really dug in. So we, you know, we appreciate you kind of doing exactly what we thought you would be doing. So questions for Christina.
Um, just quickly, technology changes fairly rapidly this, these days. So anything that you would plan for now may not be applicable in two years or five, much less in ten. So that said, my understanding has been that we have funded radios as backup. Cell phones have become used more and more as of late. Why is it that the, the radios are not being held as a backup system to the cell towers for emergency workers?
The radios themselves are, are primary dispatch. Okay, uh, secondary and detailed information uh, will normally go um, on cell phones. Um, you know, if you're pulled over by the PD and uh, they're uh, sending information back and uh, reporting on, you know, what your condition is. Um, you know, a lot of that may, you know, will not go out over the, over the uh, over the radio system. Um, fire wise, it's uh, less important, but there is a lot of work going on with respect to um, the uh, the building, uh, the building plans, things like that that can be downloaded, you know, and we don't carry a full set for the whole town. Um, the other thing that's there is, you know, what are unlock codes? Okay, how do, how do we get in? And um, and I think I explained what was going on, you know, uh, with cell phones for the uh, for the uh, E M Ts for N C E Ms. Does that answer your question, Christina?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Anyone else? When they do the drive-by tests, do we know that all of the antennas that we have and towers are fully functional now? Is everybody up on, online? Are we still waiting on a couple of those to come, become live? Do you know?
We are waiting for some of them to come live.
Yeah. Um, so we're anticipating maybe improved coverage. Once they come on, we should see some.
Part of the, part of the uh, part of the contract that, you know, Kevin's been working on, you know, for people has noticed that, you know, we're gonna have to put up a a J lift or something like that in order to uh, simulate the opponents bridge antenna and uh, put a transponder on top of it in order to output some power so that we can measure. So, you know, we're trying to, we're doing the best we can. Uh, we understand, you know, that life is not static. But we need a snapshot to know where we are versus, you know, the last one we had was center line. It's a long time ago. It's a lot of new antennas.
Right, that'll be great information to have. And finally see some coverage maps are actually accurate. So that would be nice to see too.
More accurate.
More accurate. All right. I'll, we'll use that term, more accurate. Okay, good. All right, thank you guys. Thanks for all the work. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming out.
Everybody, everybody on the commission is very enthusiastic.
Good, good, good. All right, item number seven, New Canaan Police Department, building update. And we've got uh, Bill Walbert and Tiger Man.
And Jim Bell is with us also.
Jim Bell, good.
Hello, Town Council. Um, so we spoke to Board of Finance uh, last night and uh, we were spoke to the uh, first selectman, that would be the selectman's office uh, before that, really to approve uh, the guaranteed maximum price contract that we have with Turner Construction. So as an overall update, nothing has changed since the last time we were here. And by the way, Mike Morrow, who uh, obviously a, a great member of our committee, uh, if he comes in, he could, he could add more to it. Uh, so the, the rough numbers of twenty million for construction, uh, five million for soft costs, two million for the move and two million for contingency are all still very much valid. Uh, getting us to twenty-nine million, as the Board of Finance reminded us last night. Um, that doesn't mean we wanna come in at twenty-nine million. We wanna hopefully come in at twenty-seven million and um, or something of, you know, that ilk. And so uh, uh, you know, we, now the work really begins as far as delivering in an efficient manner, the construction process that will be starting uh, with the existing building uh, around Thanksgiving. The move work has been going on. The two million dollars that you see in the uh, in the breakdown of the uh, of the budget, roughly two million, the uh, what's the uh, the, the move here? One, one million nine hundred ninety-five thousand, um, seven hundred thousand of which is rent. And the rest of that has been uh, will be is construction to basically make Locust Street, the Locust Avenue uh, uh, able to have the police department there uh, for the uh, call it year and a half, almost two years, um, where the construction will be uh, will be going on. Um, by the way, we didn't get into it with the Board of Finance, but from a town council perspective, I think you guys obviously cared awful lot about uh, the citizens, making sure that they're aware of their temporary police department, where it's gonna be. Uh, so we spoke with Greg Rowley the other day. Greg is, uh, has new responsibilities in town of uh, uh, being in charge of uh, uh, publicity for lots of things like this. And so uh, Greg Rowley will be working with Officer Cece uh, at the police department to make sure that uh, we get out our message loud and clear, not once, not twice, but many times so that we don't have any citizens um, when they're, when they may be a little uh, harried and not uh, thinking fully, going to the old police department instead of the, the temporary police department. So we'll be working on, uh, working on that as well. So getting back to cost, um, the guaranteed maximum contract with, that we have with Turner, twenty million, two hundred thirty-five thousand, we thought it would be in between eighteen and twenty million. Uh, that uh, two million, two hundred thirty-five thousand does include uh, their contingency of seven hundred, three thousand dollars. That's their contingency, not ours. Um, that's, you know, if they need uh, extra overtime, if, you know, two feet of snow gets dumped and they gotta bring in snow plows to clear the, the uh, the site, things like that. That's uh, that's how that money gets um, you know, gets spent. We uh, have our own contingency of uh, one million nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, that we are carrying for our contingency, we've used uh, three twenty-five of that could uh, so that one nine was actually three hundred twenty-five thousand more. We've used that to re-roof the entire building. Remember the last time we were here, we talked about um, that, you know, re-roofing with faux slate, the entire building, not just the new element of the, the back of the building, but the existing building as well, which has a uh, an asphalt roof that has about, that's been, that's eleven years old. So technically there is some life in that asphalt roof. Um, and uh, but it was the, the sense of the committee and I think it was the sense of the town council when we came that brought up to you before to uh, uh, do it right the first time, instead of uh, coming back to you uh, a few years after the fact and, and try to re-roof the building and just do it uh, with a brand new roof, the entire thing, a faux slate roof. It'll be more in keeping with the uh, time period of the, of the building. Obviously has a lot of aesthetic appeal to do it that way. Um, but also has a, an engineering and maintenance uh, benefit as well. So that's um, that's how we are at one point nine million right now for the uh, for the contingency. Uh, the soft costs, we've gotten, you know, more uh, insight into the soft cost, right? Big part of the money that's been spent, about one and a half million dollars was for the architects and their consultants uh, that we've used to date. Uh, but we're not gonna have a final uh, soft cost. Then we're until, let's basically pick out the furniture until uh, the, the police department decides which training software they wanna use for the training room and things like that. There's a lot of things that still uh, uh, need to be decided in that regard. Um, and uh, so that's uh, that's where we are. We're really where uh, we need to be. This is uh, really the end of the planning stage, if you will. Uh, we uh, hope to get the police department into Locust Avenue around Thanksgiving. Uh, at that point, we will be uh, starting construction at the uh, at the, on South Avenue. Um, and uh, as far as timing as that is concerned, you know, we've been saying eighteen months. Um, you know, you should be aware that Turner's schedule is thirteen months. Um, but that's not what we're going out with. Things happen in this uh, in this business, as you all know. So we've been saying eighteen. Um, let's keep with eighteen. We hope to do better, just like we hope to do better than the uh, uh, the twenty-nine million dollars. So um, that's uh, that's where we are.
Thanks, Bill. Any questions? Christina.
Uh, would you be able to provide a time schedule, what the thirteen month or eighteen month timeline looks like in terms of how the project will move along?
Yeah, um, in fact, I'm sure Turner actually, they have it. I didn't bring it with me and you don't want me trying to recreate these things from memory. So uh, um, I think we can absolutely get that for you.
Thank you.
There's probably not a question for you guys, but when, when the bonding schedule for this?
That was, yeah.
Anne got asked that question last night. So uh, she's already um, we've given her a schedule. I was confused, getting confused on a, another topic that she was asked last night as far as when she, when she had uh, bonded for. We've given her a schedule as to where we feel that the significant costs will be rolling and how our payment scheduled to Turner. Um, at present, she's looking at, it probably will not be in the bonding authorization that she's gonna put out this coming year. It'll be in a subsequent one. She's got one that's going out. That's about a twenty-four million dollar one that's gonna take up everything in the past and then the next one. So she's looking at that because we also have in the fact that we've got, she's, she has to combine a certain number of, of things together for uh, for her finance purposes. There's a whole tax law associated with it that's way beyond me. Um, but we're looking at the, probably in the next year or the year after, being that, being the phasing for when we'll bond for this. We typically bond after. We normally run the project all the way through. This one's a little bit different because it's, it's expenses. So the carrying costs are a little bit harder, you know, we not necessarily can um, carry it all the way through, but we'll, we'd be looking at not this coming um, uh, cycle, but the cycle after, the cycle after that. That's right, yeah. That's why I asked. Right, because it's so much. That's right, right. We won't be able to, we won't, we can't carry this one along at that time.
One question, Bill, about, or, or Tiger. Uh, Joe Zagorinsky mentioned the contract was uh, slammed for three hundred fifty-nine thousand yesterday.
That's our own, yeah. Uh, Gene Tyrone is our owner's rep. So he's our uh, uh, represents our interests in dealing with Turner, both on the uh, on the construction site and in the planning process. Uh, we use Gene Tyrone uh, for Saks Middle School as well. And I know we were very, very, I was on that building committee though, not writing it. And we were very, very pleased with the work he did for us. We thought he saved us. Uh, a good, good chunk of change. a good, good chunk of change and, uh, helped facilitate, you know, getting that project in on time and under budget. So, uh, yeah, he's working with us again. Uh, you know, that was put out to, to, to a bid process. Uh, Gene was, uh, slam was selected, uh, that contract, you know, to pay him was approved recently by the, um, selectmen's office. And so that's what, uh, he's been doing. And I'd also say that, uh, um, you know, working with the, uh, the building, uh, department has been, uh, uh, just incredibly, uh, wonderful. Uh, Joe is, uh, is a, is an amazing resource for this community as, uh, as are the other members of, uh, uh, you know, Tiger and, uh, and Bill and everyone else. He, uh, he really has done an amazing job. Jim Bell here has worked numerous, um, building committees over the years, and I think he could attest to the amount of work that he had to use, that he used to have to do versus what could be done, uh, in-house right now with, uh, with Joe and his team. So, uh, it's been, uh, so far, so good. But I'd last thing I want to do is do a victory dance. We haven't been punched in the nose yet. You know that's going to happen. This is a very old building. There's stuff in there, right? So, uh, we know, uh, we know something will happen that makes things not go exactly according to plan. So last thing I want to do is sound cocky here.
Right. So what, just to follow up to the slam, will you, as a building committee, uh, you probably have thought about this, but what, what will your schedule of meetings be to run through Turner? Mark and I were in the meetings at the library when Turner would run through there. They have an amazing array of software that they tell you exactly what's going on every second of the job. So will you guys be meeting weekly, bi-weekly? What, what's the?
Right now, we're every two weeks, but as we get to, uh, where things are starting to happen, uh, it may, uh, you know, increase more than, uh, more than that. Certainly when we used, um, uh, for the Saks Middle School project, it was the same kind of thing, different construction company. Uh, but every, uh, every two weeks, uh, they came in with, uh, uh, you know, a spreadsheet. Gene had already, um, sanitized that spreadsheet, put it into English for us. And, you know, already went back and forth, you know, that one's on you, construction company, this one, uh, you know, uh, we're likely to eat, you know, because things happen. And, uh, and, uh, we're, we're thinking it's going to be the same, uh, the same way here. These, um, everyone has worked together before. Um, so it, uh, we don't expect any, uh, any problems after that.
All right. Good. Thank you, Bill. Any, anything else? Okay. Thank you, guys. Keep us posted. Thank you for the update. All right. Next up, we have the land swap. Earlier tonight, we had a public hearing. Item number eight is the approval of an agreement between the town of New Canaan and the First Presbyterian Church in New Canaan to exchange an equal amount of comparable property between the New Canaan Nature Center property located at 144 Owen Oak Ridge Road and the First Presbyterian Church property located at 178 Owen Oak Ridge Road. And here to present is Tiger, you're going to do this one?
Yeah, just, uh, I was waiting to, just give me, can you?
You've got some late, um, later riles on the tablet too, that came in, just some slides that we can walk through too. Okay. Yeah. So that'll be up. Uh, they came in on your email, but they're going to come up on the screen here. Yep. Thank you, Tucker.
All right. So. Okay. So, uh, we're here to, uh, discuss a proposed land swap between the town of New Canaan and the First Presbyterian Church. Um, I'm Tiger Man, Director of Public Works for the record. So, um, this is part of chapter 50, sale or lease of town owned real property under, uh, section 50 dash one, approval required. No sale or lease of real property owned by the town should be valid unless approved by the town council. That's why we're here. Um, this is already gone for an eight dash 24 review and positive, a positive review, uh, positive report from, uh, the plan, planning and zoning, all right? It's because of, uh, uh, exact same thing under section eight, that's 24 municipal improvements. We can't lease, sell any park land or any part of land without it actually having a positive view. We went to them, uh, several months ago, uh, in July. And it was unanimous that, uh, they felt that this was in keeping with the plan of conservation and development for various reasons. So what are we, what are we talking about? Basically, the First Presbyterian Church is nestled in between two parcels of the nature center, the northern parcel, um, that you see here at the top of the screen and the southern parcel at the bottom of the screen. The parcel line between the two parcels a number of years ago was actually merged by the board of selectmen because of when we put the donkey shed in, we actually were over the line as far as setback limits. So we actually had to merge that line. So in essence, there's one parcel now with the council, uh, sorry, the council, the, the, the entire nature center is one continuous parcel. Um, when we were look, surveying the area for, for other reasons, for, uh, for town purposes, we actually noticed that, uh, that there was a problem. We looked at the GIS and the GIS, according to our geographical information system, the yellow line is what's shown on the GIS. The actual property line is the red line. Okay. So we have a disconnect in town in certain places. Well, I'm sorry. So they don't know the GIS showed, that's right. The GIS showed the red, um, and the actual parcel line is the, is the yellow. I apologize. So we were off by about five feet. We have that anomaly throughout town in certain areas, basically due to photogrammetry with the, with the GIS and where they took the, where they took the pictures versus how the mapping is being laid out. So you can see it in certain areas, it's, it's easier when you're looking at a property line. It's got a stone wall and the stone wall is offset, you know, that you have a problem. Or if the road is not necessarily where it shows, you know, and the, the road is here, but the property lines are here. We know that there's a problem, right? In, inside a parcel, you don't necessarily know it. So looking back when the columbarium for the, for the church was installed, I can see exactly why they would have had a problem. They thought that they were on their property. And out in the field, there was a series of, uh, trees, evergreen trees that were in the field that everyone had agreed to that that was the property line. If you looked at that, looked at where the columbarium was actually installed, you'd see that they thought that they were inside their, their area. When we actually went out and surveyed it pure, we noticed that there was an anomaly, that there was a problem, um, that portion of the columbarium was actually placed on town land inadvertently. Um, if you want to know what a columbarium is, this is what it is. It's just basically a stone wall that has, um, um, remains inside, cremated remains inside from, uh, from the parishioners. Um, it's obviously very important to the, to the church. And, uh, when the, uh, when the anomaly was discovered, the only true way to look at it was to either try to give them an easement for it, or actually just try to see if we couldn't swap some land to make it actually work between the two, the two properties. So we went back out and, and took a look at what would work for both sides, work for the nature center in the town and work for the, the church. We went to planning and zoning and planning and zoning determined that this was a structure. So therefore, since it was a structure, it needed to have a certain amount of setback from it. That almost determined exactly our extent of land that we would need, um, to, uh, to swap with, uh, with the church itself. Um, so given that, and that actually worked for the church as well, because they'd like to see some screening around it and have a little bit of a, you know, a, a buffer between them and the nature center. Um, so looking at it, we actually had the, the northern parcel surveyed and the southern parcel surveyed. Um, won't get into those details, but then looking at it is again, that the church itself nestled in the middle. Um, and then we looked at what we could do as far as try to give a buffer zone, a necessary setback from the, from the columbarium and a buffer zone for landscaping. And then what would we need for the nature center side? And the thought was that on the opposite side of, uh, of the parcel, uh, of the, the church parcel on the northern side, where they have but the butterfly meadow, the nature center was looking at doing some improvements on the butterfly meadow and increasing the screening and doing some other things. There was a rose, a row of alanthus and some other trees that needed to be removed and they wanted to increase that screening. So the thought was that if we could gain back a little bit of land there and gain a little bit, uh, of a greater buffer between the parking lot and the butterfly meadow, that would be good for the nature center. Um, and again, swap out an equal set of land for the, uh, for the church and, uh, for the purposes needed. So looking at it, uh, closer, you can see it's 3,000 square feet. Um, we're looking at giving to, uh, to the church and then taking back in addition, uh, three, uh, 3,000 feet uh, further to the north that butts up against the property, uh, property line there or the parking lot there. And that'll give us, it's about three feet wide of a buffer all the way through. And that should give us, uh, some, some more substantial room to actually plant, um, adjacent to the, uh, to the parking lot and then, you know, allow the butterfly meadow to thrive. Um, so that kind of gives you, to you in a nutshell, we've asked the attorneys for their read. The attorneys are all in favor um, of it. They think it's a, it's a good thing to do. We've talked to the church. Church is in favor. The nature center is in favor. Um, this has been a process that's been going on for several months, uh, a lot longer than that, actually. Um, and, uh, we feel it's necessarily the right thing to do. We want to ask the church to move the columbarium off the property. If there's another way to, to, uh, satisfy that situation and a modest swap of land of 3,000 square feet either side. And we can, we asked, you know, are they of equal value? And in essence, it's, it's one parcel for the nature center. It's of equal value. It doesn't matter where it is. And you might be, uh, might necessarily be argued that the, the northern parcel, that the nature center is gaining, that the town is gaining is more valuable than the area that we're, that we're giving up because it was an area, the area that we're giving up was not used by the nature center at all, because we didn't think we owned it at the time, right? We thought that, you know, that columbarium was all part of the church parcel. So we had no use for it, no, no use, you know, and, and we're not having any activities in it. So we're actually, from, from that perspective, we're gaining 3,000 square feet in essence, instead of losing 3,000 square feet or swapping 3,000 square feet.
All right.
So.
Our motion to approve.
Sorry.
That's all right. Well, I mean, this one you had us at a low. I mean, you've got, you've got. Eyes dotted.
It's a public hearing. I gotta go. You know, I don't want to.
I was impressed with the presentation. I'm so moved.
Need a second. Robin, all in favor? And Rita's out there, right? Okay. All right. All right. So that's, that's unanimous.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Christina.
Uh, could you just tell me how old this columbarium is? Okay.
It was about in the eighties. I should have said that. I'm sorry. It was in the top of my tongue and then it went to the next sentence. So, yeah, it was when the, it was installed in the, in the mid eighties, I believe.
So it was shortly after the property was deeded then?
No, we, we got this park back in 1959, 1960.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. No, I understand.
Right. They, it could be in the wrong.
That's a good question.
That's a quick, good question. You said this happens in other areas too with the GIS.
The GIS, yeah, there's an anomaly in the GIS. If you look at it to where there's, where we have a situation, it's, it's not correctable, to be honest with you, to try to make it work. Cause anytime we try to move and, and shift one area, we actually wound up, uh, running into a problem elsewhere. So we just have to be aware and our staff is aware that, you know, we, we can't just utilize the GIS. The GIS is a nice reference for it. It's a fantastic reference. To be honest, we use it every single day. But it's not the end all to be all. The end all to be all is the actual property survey, right? So, so we know to take a look at it and then at that point in time, confirm, right? You know, the majority of the answers come on the GIS system, but we always confirm.
Real quick, are there any meaningful structures on the northern slice?
No. No, they're not.
Yep. Christina.
Yes, I almost forgot the question. Tiger, how often do you take site, um, surveys on properties for the town?
Not that often, only when we, when we're looking at, um, a project per se, then we need to actually have the, the pure data. We don't have surveys. We don't have, um, up to date surveys of all of our parcels, if you would. Um, so we are looking at doing that. It's one of the initiatives that Maria, our town engineer is spearheading. So we're actually surveying Meat Park at present, so that to gather up every single thing that we've done there. And then the thought is, um, any other future improvement, there'll be monies involved in the project for an ASBIL. So that the survey will get immediately, you know, get an ASBIL associated with, so the survey will be up to date. So we won't, we run into the problem. We survey it. We do something to the property. We don't, we haven't done the ASBIL. And then next time we do it again and again, and eventually that the initial survey is no longer valid because something, so many changes.
What project is going to get, happen at the nature center that you needed to do the survey?
The, uh, the nature center itself, we, we had, um, worked through the northern section for all boardwalks that were being done. So that had to be done. We had to flag all the wetlands in that area as well. And then on the southern side, we had the issue with, uh, lead, you know, there. And then at that point in time, we said, well, let's survey this as well. Um, so it, it, and then just inadvertently came out.
Okay.
So that we saw the, the issue unfortunately.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Let's go on. So we have item number nine, Playhouse update, review and update on the Playhouse Theater renovation project. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Bill.
Cliffhanger.
What? So the, um, Playhouse?
Sorry.
So, uh, again, thanks for having us. So when we was here last, I listened to the, our meeting from July 19th. I listened to that yesterday and this morning driving in the, um,
You're a glutton for punishment.
Oh, this is, yeah, it was, yeah, I relived that. No, the, um, so, uh, um, so at that point in time, you know, you gave us go ahead to go. Thank you very much. Um, several days later from that, board of selectmen approved the contract with Alden Bailey to move forward. Um, we gathered all the parties together, had one large kickoff meeting with Alden Bailey subcontractors, all of Cinema Lab representatives and the town representatives. And Alden Bailey's basically off and running. Um, so at present, the basement is empty. So everything's been taken out of the basement where we've started, uh, uh, our footings are installed for, to support the second, the upper floor, second floor and third floor. Um, they're working on now setting the, uh, the slab for the elevator and then working on pouring the first six feet. And then at that point in time, they'll start building the shaft again. And then they're working elsewhere throughout the building. They've got several crews working in there at, at, at present. Uh, our materials have been ordered. Everything's, you know, on its way. We're, uh, still working with Cinema Lab on uh, finalizing their finishes as to where they want to, you know, what they want to see and what they, uh, and where, and then pricing those out that, but that'll be on their side. But some of the finishes, uh, if you can imagine, matter because if you put in a hardwood floor and it's three quarters of an inch, then we know exactly where the thresholds have to be. If you're putting in a tile floor and it's a little bit less, then we know where we need to set the thresholds and where, where we need to cut doors and things out of nature. So that information is still, um, uh, forthcoming and, but it's not delaying our contractor in any way, shape or form. Um, the, uh, the thought was that at our kickoff meeting, um, based upon his analysis of his schedule, he was looking at 270 days. Okay. So that put us into May 31st, right? June 1. Um, he's hoping to do better than that. Obviously, you know, same exact thing that Bill mentioned, you know, Turner, you know, was 18 months. They came back and said 13 months. We said, fine, we're still going to call, tell everybody 18 months because we don't want to, you know, we want to over promise, you know, and under deliver. We would rather under promise and over deliver. So he said 20, 270 days. Obviously Cinema Lab would like to see it yesterday. We'd like to see it yesterday, but we're working through that and, uh, he's feeling that he might be able to take a month, maybe a month and a half off. We are looking at possibly a soft opening as far as maybe getting the first floor open. So the theaters could be open while we're working on the second floor. Uh, but that's to be determined, uh, at a later date, whether or not we can actually obtain a temporary CO for a portion of the building while we're still operating in another. That's a discussion with the building department, but we are looking at other options to try to see if we can't bring them in a little bit earlier. Um, and start their operations, the main operation, which we consider, which would be the theater and then the secondary one being the, uh, the event space upstairs. So right now we haven't, uh, run into any problems. Um, so our revised budget, um, is still valid and, uh, we still have a, a good amount of contingency left, um, from the initial read. And we'll see as we go. I can come back next month and tell you a little bit more. That's perfectly fine with us. If you want us to come back every month and give you a little bit of more of an update.
So we don't have anything based on the revised budget, but not on the initial budget.
I'm sorry.
Is it, that's, you said we're holding to the revised budget, right?
Well, you, right. You gave us the additional monies and that was basically what our, what our budget was.
And that was the initial concern was that they would come back and, and, and have a request for additional money, which happened. Yes. So then I'm asking this. So now we're holding ourselves to the revised budget and we're on plan for that?
I'm sorry. It's the last sentence. We're holding ourselves to the last budget and the last, what was the last sentence? That's, that's my description. We're holding ourselves to the revised.
I'm repeating what you said.
Okay. Right. So the revised budget was 7,985,000 dollars. That's our budget. That's what we're holding to.
And we're on plan for that.
And we're on plan for that. Yeah. Sorry. I misunderstood what you were, what you were asking.
I was just saying that initially we went in and we said, hey, we don't know if this is like, we're going to hold ourselves to this. And then, uh, we had a revised budget, which we all approved, which we thought was excellent. And we think it's a great, grand, uh, you know, experience that the, the town's going to have. And I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're, we're moving forward and, and tracking towards that revised budget.
That's correct.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anything, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah. Tiger, maybe the next time you, you come back, a couple of like photos of, you know, showing some work that's done.
They're taking, yeah, they're taking photos every day and then, uh, and then additional photos, you know, are being documented. And our thought is that we can do a time lapse photography at the end, but we can certainly bring in stuff. I apologize. It, you know, yeah, but yeah, next time, not much to really nothing to say, oh gee, really? Look at this. We, you know, we, we emptied the basement. We cleaned out the basement, took every, all the, you know, the materials out of there. It's not necessarily, that's not sexy, right? So when we start putting the, the elevator in, you start seeing some other things, then, then you say, oh, okay. You know, so certainly we can come back and give you kind of a progress, you know, as to, you know, daily. You know, so certainly we can come back and give you kind of a progress, you know, as to, you know, daily work or every week showing you.
Heck, I mean, because the residents are obviously excited. We want to keep keep the excitement moving.
To that point, I having some lunches on Fridays, whatever in town. People are fired up over it like they're very, very excited. And it's like, you know, that this is becoming real. And I was just, you know, getting a touch point of, you know, people ask, you know, there there's communication and they're they're very excited about about this. And and I think it's a very exciting touch point for for the the community in the town to offer our 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 residents. Yeah.
Excellent.
I have a question.
Christina.
Tiger, at the last meeting that we had at the library, we asked Ian Hobbs for a basically a project schedule and an overview of all the expenses on the project. Has that been created?
Yes, we can give you both.
Okay.
All right. So the schedule's coming from Alden Bailey, not from Ian.
Okay.
Okay. And we can give you, we can give you an analysis of where we are monetarily across the board for that.
Breakdown of all the cost. Okay. And the new schedule that Bailey has provided.
We can give you that.
Yes, but that has been scrubbed to see that it will be met and that it's realistic enough?
Yes.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Robin?
Just beautifully received some emails. People a little unhappy with the exterior, but looks right now. Can we go in there? What can what can we do in the meantime?
We're trying, right? So well, we just.
What can they beautifully?
Oh, sorry. I thought, you know, we just wrapped it. You know, we wrapped the fence and tried to give it a little, you know, like a you see somebody peeking behind the, you know, painter behind the curtain. The problem that we have is right now, the main construction entrance is the front.
Right. So so then you can't, we can't do anything.
It's kind of tough, right? And it's tough for us to do anything because I don't want to bring all of the materials through the front. I don't want to redo the sidewalk and then bring all the materials through the top of it, right? Because that's so. We're at a little bit of a an impasse. So what we can do, but we we've asked the contractor to try to button it up a little bit and then we can look, you know, at the area and see, and we can certainly discuss options. There might be something for you guys to be able to do on either side, not necessarily through the main entrance side, but, you know, wrapping around it to try to soften the look because it is still, you know, it doesn't look pretty, you know, it's a construction site. So but we are looking at the fact of that eventually we're going to be taking down that small white building in the back. Because that's going to allow us to hopefully put in a ramp and a staircase in the back for access accessibility to the parking lot in the back. And that will become part of our entrance to bring in some of the materials. At that point in time, we shift and we get away from the front. We come in the back. Then then it starts to get a little bit easier for us to do some things in the front.
Okay, thanks.
No, no problem. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. That's the Playhouse. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is we're going to be going into the executive session. We move that up on the agenda. So we need a motion vote to go into executive to start.
Second.
That was Mark and Christina's second. And we need to cut zoom off and then we'll. Oh, yeah, all in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Yeah. So in the room. Thank you, Brian. Another long drive.
Drive safely.
All right, it is eight fifty five and we just came out of executive session. And now we are on to our next item on the agenda, which is item number eleven, which was an approval of a nominee to affordable housing committee. So a little background, obviously, we're all up to speed with the Affordable Housing Committee. This is sort of an official nomination. The town council has one nominee onto the Affordable Housing Committee. We were all in in the making of the committee. We all agreed to put a member of the town council, remember the Board of Finance, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission and a member of the Affordable, the the Housing Authority on. So there's four positions already. And then there will be five from the from the public. And so tonight we want to officially nominate our member to the Affordable Housing Committee. That the Board of Selectmen already has the names, but we just need to make it official. So so we will need a a motion and a second and then a vote. So Tommy, wanna wanna do the?
Yeah, I move that we recommend Hillary Armon to be our representative. Second.
That's second mark. All right, discussion. All in favor?
Can I vote?
Yes.
Yes.
That's unanimous. Looks like Rita's hand's still up. So Rita, you're you're voting yes. And Hillary, I want to thank.
No, it's been I I put it down and then I put it up. So.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you. I, you know, just a minute to thank Hillary for stepping up. This is an incredibly important role. Obviously, the Affordable Housing Committee is going to be a ve- very, very busy, busy committee. So the amount of time for looking forward is is not going to be minimal. So we thank you for stepping up. And also, we'd love to, you know, you're our liaison. So in terms of hearing what's going on with the Affordable Housing Committee, you know, we probably should add that to our committee reports going forward, once they start to meet. So.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And next item up was Christina made a motion Maria seconded to have an update or discussion on where we are with the audit committee. So Christina, I'll give I'll kick it off to you to start and then we'll.
Okay. The definition of the audit committee member is stated in our code as being a financial expert, an individual who has substantial audit experience in the corporate or government sectors and who possesses or obtains a basic understanding of government financial reporting and auditing. The Board of Selectmen voted and supported Roy Abramowitz. I have not seen any communication whatsoever about the process and or about any other candidates that have been suitable or accepted by the Audit Committee. Therefore, I'd like to bring forth Roy Abramowitz as a nominee for this position and take it from there.
Point of order.
Yes.
The questions come up as to whether, because this wasn't a noticed item, whether we can actually take a formal vote.
Yeah, I mean.
Without having notified the public that they're.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Didn't we just do that?
No, we.
Well, that's that's an existing.
We did it for the affordable housing.
The.
That one we could easily call a straw poll. I mean, that.
Now, but so is it? Well, first of all, first of all, the the Affordable Housing Committee is our committee that we're putting a member on to. That's completely different than this is. You know, we we've had this discussion. So to bring it up to speed over the summer, I've talked to Bill Perret and Robin Friar a little bit about the Audit Committee and their needs, and they're still trying to figure out numbers and who's coming off. There's some discussion about terms. There really hasn't been.
They're one, they're one member short, Steve, and that has been.
Okay, so hold on a second. I was I was talking. They they are in the process of also trying to figure out the terms because we formed the Audit Committee in two thousand fourteen, I believe, and we haven't had any turnover on that committee for chairman. So Bill's been on. So that's the first thing we're trying to figure out is is, you know, is his term ending and will we have more than one? So there's there's some moving parts as far as the committee goes. So that's one of the reasons why it hasn't really moved forward. So we may need more than one. We may need two or possibly three. So.
Are you saying that the Board of Selectmen, when they voted on nominating Roy, that they didn't understand what they were doing?
I, you know, I don't know. I mean, there's some questions about terms and we're trying to get to trying to get a closer picture about that in terms of.
But that has nothing to do with the nomination at hand.
Did we already vote on that nominee?
No, the vote was, how should I say, not not done correctly because some people.
So do you want to re-vote and just have the same outcome?
Whatever it is.
Okay.
But what what I want would not what I want to avoid is if he if if he gets turned down, I'd rather see this go to the point where we figure out how many positions are open and what's needed on there.
I think it's been six months or more since we discussed this at the meeting and there hasn't been any other conversation among us in regards to moving forward. So to stagnate it and not put somebody on is a problem all in itself.
It it is and it isn't. I mean, it's not. I talked to Bill about this and it's not like this is the their busy time where they're down. I mean, I I actually asked for a listing of folks who need to be filled. So the Audit Committee is one position. We also have positions open on the Historic District Commission, Historic Review Committee. We've got, you know, there's a list, there's a list here of open positions. So it's not like this is something that we have to do, you know, today. So that's, you know, that's one of the reasons why finding the right person and finding the number of people that are going to be on this and looking ahead is is what what Bill is trying to do.
I'm just thinking that this is more personal than it is a matter of taking a vote.
You know, I don't think it's it really isn't personal. It's not like this hasn't been. It's not. It's not. It's not like this hasn't been, you know, the discussions are ongoing with this. It's not like we haven't been talking about this. I mean, it's.
Well, we haven't been talking about it on town council about it.
We voted, we voted it down. So what why would we continue discussing it?
Well, right now I brought a motion. It was second. This is a discussion. I'd like to have a vote.
Well, of course, we're gonna have discussion.
Vote down.
Could I make a comment?
No.
As an ex officio member of this body.
And I know that's not why other people vote might have voted no. So I wouldn't assume that that's what everybody was voting no on. I think.
Well, we should know what everybody's voting. It's a vote yes or no.
Right. Right. And I think that I listen, I think Mr. Abramowitz is qualified. I think he's a CPA. I think that he but I have to say that my basis for voting no was a temperament issue. And he he kind of proved that point when he yelled at Steve at the end of the meeting. I I I don't feel comfortable putting somebody who's capable of doing that. So right off the cuff, in front of our finance department, in front of other town employees, I think that that's kind of a liability, to be honest. So you know, I I don't want you to assume that I voted no or that I thought this was an ongoing process.
I understand.
So, you know, we did vote on this and I I'm not sure why. I don't know if there's been another nomination. It's gone through Board of Selectmen. The facts have changed a little bit, given his outburst here, to be honest.
The fact that he was nominated and the fact that the town council took a vote and some did not vote on yes or no, did not abstain, but we're not voting because of a lack of a process is what tainted the whole vote to begin with.
I don't understand why it matters. I you vote yes or no on somebody and whether it's because of the process or because you don't think that they're an adequate candidate.
I I don't disagree, but that's not the way the vote went.
I don't understand.
So.
Steve, Rita has her hand up.
Uh, we just gotta give Kevin the floor for a sec and then we'll kick the.
I just want to make a comment, Steve, because I've never heard you phrase it that way before. You know, I was the author with Catherine Corbett of the Audit Committee Ordinance. I was on the town council. And you said, this is our committee. I mean, that's not what the ordinance was intended to do. The town council used to be responsible for the audit. And we delegated it to another body, which was created by ordinance. And I've never, you know, every body other than the Housing Authority under the charter is appointed by the Board of Selectmen, subject to, in the case of Audit Committee and Ethics Board, I think are the only two, maybe Board of Finance, requires approval by the town council. But I never regarded that as in any way the town council controls this committee. So.
Yeah. So I think I think you might have misunderstood me there. So I said affordable housing. We're nominating Hillary as our because she's coming from our body.
No, I thought you said it's.
Not to be.
The Audit Committee is our committee.
Well, the Audit Committee, I view the Audit Committee as as the town council's committee because we formed the Audit Committee as a result of not having the bandwidth and the the talent, if you will, to dive into what really is required in town.
Right. But it's it's independent committee like all the other boards and commissions that advises not only the town council, but also the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance and and actually the Board of Education. So.
That's totally correct. But also, when you look at, when you look back at those meetings that we had, the one thing I stressed over and over and over again was that this committee could never be a powerful enough committee that they would be running roughshod over departments or over other committees. So that's why when you look at the the chart of where they report to, they report to the town council and that's. And the Board of Selectmen.
And the Board of Finance.
And the Board of.
I think that's what the chart, the ordinance says, so.
But if you look back at those meetings, I made a big point about we don't want to create a super audit committee that decides that they're going to go off on some sort of tangent without reporting back to somebody. And that's where the council came in to say, there's got to be some checks and balances to what they're doing.
Well, if it if it appeases Christina, we could vote again. I don't necessarily, but today is, but perhaps next month we vote, you 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 we put it on the agenda, we vote.
No, I brought the motion up and it's been second. The Roberts-Roosevelt order called that we would have a vote following that. There's no reason to postpone it.
So 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 the way that the way this stands right now, it's 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 gone to the Board of Selectmen. And we asked that we had time to look at this. And if you if this is an important enough thing where we need to put it on the agenda and have the have public comment, walk through it again, because it was a big deal. I don't think I've ever had something of that we voted on that had so much feedback. I heard from, I mean, I heard from a lot of people.
And there's been a lot of misinformation and a lot of rumors. And I think that we owe it to the candidate to take a vote and.
Which we will.
Settle it.
Which we will. But another thing that that you need to consider too is that we've got a brand new administration coming in. We've got a, you know, and to me, these appointments and we we write this into the charter for a reason. A lot of these appointments that happen shouldn't take place in a change of administration. It should be, it should be done under the new administration.
And it could have been done back in March.
Yeah. Look, listen, it's not like we haven't been busy, Christina. I mean, I don't know about you, but this last year, we've worked harder on on things that we've ever worked before. I mean, it's, we've had a lot on our plate. A lot.
Uh, if you don't know about me, I've been at every meeting and doing my job.
Yes, you have, absolutely. But I'm just pointing out that we have been, we've had a lot on our plate. So it's not that we haven't had other things that we've been doing.
Okay.
So if you if. Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna do this, we're gonna need to take it up again at our next meeting. But I again, I I fall back on the fact that I think if it's going to be a new administration coming in with appointments across the board, there's appointments to many of these commissions and committees that are going to have to be looked at. So that's usually what we do in New Canaan is we wait and we let a new, the new administration select people for these different committees and commissions.
Steve, the charter says the two weeks after the election is the period where appointments can't be made. We have appointments we're we're gonna make in the next two weeks.
Yeah.
Next month. So.
Okay. Good. All right.
So I'm asking for a vote.
Did Rita have her hand up?
Oh, Rita, sorry, Rita, you you well, you can take the floor, Rita.
I'm sorry. I know I'm trying to like manage my technology here as I so sorry, hold on one second. Um, I just wanted to comment because, um, after what Hillary had said, I mean, I think it's important that we have people who are skilled. And if I'm gonna, you know, if we're gonna vote here, I just need to tell my story or what I think. I've just spent three days at my company's annual conference during which you were discussing the value of leadership and how it's about respect, collaboration and modeling the behavior that you want to see in other people. I am not questioning this particular person, Roy's skills or ability. I think he's got it. He's got it in spades, but I question the approach and the tactics. I I mean, I think it's great that he's challenging assumptions and asking questions. I think we all should do that. We have a responsibility to do that. But I also think we need to do so in a way that's, you know, positive and respectful. And in my opinion, the approach that he has taken on multiple occasions lacks professionalism, maturity and the communication skills that I think are important for a productive, you know, collaboration. So it's not just the what, it's the how. And I, you know, I'm I'm happy to vote right now, but I I will say that the way, you know, I saw his response to Steve after the last vote, uh, the emails, the accusatory emails that have been sent are not collaborative, are not productive. And there and there are other examples I'm not going to go into that I, you know, personally have experienced. I just don't think he's the right person for the job because of his temperament. So I agree with Hillary and I think if we're gonna vote right now, I'm 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 ready to do so, but I don't think he's the right person for this position.
Let's see.
Robin?
So I apologize to Tom because I'm constantly asking him questions. I did ask when Hillary was up, is like, don't we need twenty?
So I apologize to Tom because I'm constantly asking him questions. And I did ask when Hillary was up, is like, don't we need 24 hours? Cause it wasn't on the agenda, but it wasn't the same situation.
Yeah.
To, we can add up for a vote though.
Yeah.
That hasn't been put in for the public. I just think it should go on the next agenda though, for transparency. So the public should know what's going to be voted on and give them a chance to make an opinion, write in letters. But I think in the spirit of transparency, it should, if it's gonna be the vote, should be on the next agenda.
What, what, when everyone raised their hand earlier, were you aware that you were agreeing to a vote? Cause I don't remember what Christina said. I've said no, because I didn't plan on ever voting on this.
No, I mean, I, I.
Everyone raised their hand. Did you know that you were, that, that she'd called for a vote?
No, I would, I was, I, I voted because we wanted to discuss it. I wasn't prepared to vote and I'm not prepared to vote and I won't vote. Because I, I'm not, this is not the way, this is, this is.
Why did you raise your hand? To Christina's point, she has a vote. So I mean, I, I think we have to be careful about when, if we're bringing a topic to the agenda.
Yeah.
It has to be very clear.
Right.
It wasn't clear.
No, it wasn't.
You guys would not have raised your hand, I think is what you're telling me now. I held my, I put my hand down. She has a valid point. I don't know how to move forward, I'm stepping away.
That's fine. I mean, it's, the, the, the whole thing started with the process and this is not the way we do things. And that's why I'm not gonna vote on this. I'll abstain, I guess, if I have to, but we're not, we're not, the way we, we work this stuff is we don't blindside at nine fifteen at night on something that was extraordinarily controversial. And take a vote in the middle of the night at a meeting that nobody's here. There's not one person here in the audience, not one. There isn't a single soul in this building.
It was up for you to put it at the end of the meeting. We could have done it at the beginning, but Steve, if you're going, if you're going to color it that way.
Well, that, that, I'm just, I'm not coloring it at all. I'm telling the truth. There's not a person in this room.
And there usually isn't.
For this, there would be.
Well, I didn't see them the last time.
This room was packed the last time we talked about it. Yes, it was. When Roy stood, when Roy screamed at me in the back of the room, this place was packed. This was a packed house.
It, they were not here to talk about the nomination or to speak, um, about the candidate.
Well, you, you can, you can color it the way you want. But anyway, this is, it's not the way we do it. It's not the process we want to do and it's not the example we want to set. So I will, I'll leave it at that. But you can, you can call, you can call your vote because it's a legal vote.
Was there, was there, her motion, was it to vote or was it a discussion?
This, this, this is. Make it an agenda item. Right? That's what I understood.
Yeah.
Yeah. Make, make an agenda item of discussion is the.
Add it to the agenda, not, not to commit to vote on it.
So I wasn't here for, but what, does anyone remember the formulation of what the motion was? The motion was to add a discussion about, did you say discussion? Did you say a vote on Audit Committee?
I don't remember exactly what.
So you can't, there.
To this, yeah.
So there, there can't be a vote because we, you don't know what you're making a motion on.
But we didn't say the same thing we were talking about.
You can make a motion now to hold a vote. We can determine whether or not we want to take a vote.
When Tom presented a discussion about eight thirty G, there was no discussion about a vote either. So I followed almost the words verbatim that Tom used.
I'll, I'll just reiterate the fact that these are completely separate items. We ceremoniously added Hillary to the Affordable Housing Committee. We all knew that she was gonna be on the Affordable Housing Committee. It was just a ceremonial vote to make sure that the process is followed. This is completely different.
Well, it's a surprise to me that you're saying that because when you say we all knew about it, I didn't know about it. I'm learning it at the meeting. So I don't know how that information is being passed through.
You didn't know about what?
That Hillary was being nominated.
Really?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And you and I talked about the possible nominees.
We've.
There was no follow-up to that.
We've been talking about who's gonna be on this thing since the beginning of the formation of this committee. For you to say that is like, it's like, who am I talking to?
I wonder if there's an obvious solution here. Why, why don't we, why don't we decide to put it on the agenda for the next meeting? That's before the election.
I don't want to. I want to take a vote and, and put it to bed because the last vote was inappropriate. And I just.
Well, this vote's inappropriate too. So which, which.
How is it inappropriate? It has been passed and voted on by the Board of Selectmen.
Just reviewed why it's inappropriate. It's nine seventeen at night without a soul in here.
We three votes all the way to midnight.
It wasn't our, on our agenda. And it's an incredibly important topic that I think people would want to know about. Is it or isn't it? That's all, I, I just had that question. Is it or isn't it an important topic that?
It's a very important topic that you want to just postpone.
I rest my case.
Can, thank you. But when it can be done, it's today.
It could also be done in October.
Well, we could have done it in March.
Could have been done in March, could have been done in, in, could have been done anytime along the way.
Anyway, I would like to take a vote.
I'm still sitting here puzzled about why we're revoting on this. We voted on it as a town council, whether to appoint him or not. We said no, for whatever reason. And then he screamed at everybody and left. So I don't understand why we're.
You say face, we say face one.
Forget it, still be your hand.
Can you make a motion within a motion?
Yeah, you can.
Yes.
Yes.
Go for it.
You can, she would, she could, she would have to amend her motion. Otherwise we'd have to, we have to, we have to kill them.
So can we make an amendment to this motion that we take this up at the next meeting? All right, I make a motion to take this up at the next meeting with a solidified process and more information.
Second.
Good. Discussion. All in favor? And opposed. One, two. Okay.
In favor of what?
Taking it up in October.
At the next meeting.
So Rita, you have your hand up.
Yes, I just put it up.
In opposition or in support?
No, in supportive.
Okay, so I, we're in taking, the, the motion was taken up in October, so we need to have a, have a.
Well, you have to be very precise that the, the, if this is what was sought after is we look to have a vote on the appointment to the Audit Committee at the next regularly scheduled town council meeting. Like that's, if that's what the formulation someone wants, that's what it should be.
Is that what you want, Maria? Is that how you want to write it? It was your motion?
Wait, the appointment of a person or the vote on a particular person?
Now, could I just clarify things? Cause I, I, I recall your vote that you took before was not against Roy. It was deciding, because I think the wording of the minutes in the discussion was that he was still an eligible candidate. So you're saying you're gonna take up, but you know, the Roy's nomination is still the nomination from the Board of Selectmen. So I'm not sure you're, depending how, what, what you're saying. If you're saying you want other nominations from the Board of Selectmen, that's a decision for the Board of Selectmen to make.
Say that for the pending nomination.
Well, again, so just however you, you understand what you're doing.
But why do you want, I want to understand why postpone it?
Because I think people feel need, well, it will put us in the same place, just a month from now, but maybe in that time, people will have the need to learn more or.
Well, actually tune in and actually weigh in if they want to.
Because if it came up.
I don't think anyone tuned in before in the audit. So I don't really understand the difference between what Tom did and what Christina did. I think out of respect to Christina, we should take a vote. And I know people are opposed to it. But I don't understand, it was very clear to me and like Kevin said, it was on process that we didn't vote on Roy. It wasn't based on appointment. If you read the, the notes, Penny had made a point that it was a process issue. So we were.
We didn't, no, we voted on, we voted on him.
Some people. Sorry, uh, we were voting on the process as not being correct. So we never actually voted on Roy. You can listen to the minutes. You can listen to the meeting. That was Penny's whole point and maybe someone can remember that. But I, I think out of fairness to men and women on the council, Tom made a motion, we voted on it. There was no opposition. I never heard of anyone being nominated to affordable housing. I'm very happy with Hillary being, being, uh, voted on, but I don't, I don't understand why we're not taking Christina's motion up.
So the, the motion's been amended, so we need to vote on the amended motion.
Well, that, that wasn't seconded. There's no, there was, Maria made a, oh, seconded. So I'm making a motion to go back to the original motion to, uh, to vote on that.
You can't do that. You can't do that. You gotta, you gotta take a vote on that. So we, we need to.
Have to take a vote on the original motion.
It's been amended though.
Yeah, the amendment would be to vote on.
Yeah.
Roy around at the next meeting.
Quick, just quickly, Tucker, do you, do you have what the minutes reflected from the meeting where we voted, just to clear this?
So the motion, so the motion was to appoint Mr. Abramowitz. Not to.
Exactly.
To, to approve, to, to approve the appointment, right?
Yes. Well, we adopted the, the minutes.
Well, this is what we said and what we voted on. Yes, the, the discussion about process was very prominent and articulated.
And I'll just be clear.
She did. So I think the minutes, I know we didn't correct them, sorry.
Oh, no.
But I think they're wrong.
I, um, forgot what I was gonna say. I, I think, um, I mean, that act, I did not want to say necessarily why I voted no originally, and I would not have said it had this not come up again. Because I don't want to even look like I'm besmirching a member of our community. And so the only behavior that I'm gonna reference that solidified my opinion was his outburst at the end of the meeting, which nobody has bothered to explain or excuse. So I purposely tried to stay quiet during that nomination. And for his appointment, because I, I didn't want to put him in an awkward position. And now I feel like I've been put in an awkward position to say, why? And I'm sorry for that because I actually really like Mr. Abramowitz personally. I just do not think he has the appropriate temperament. That's why I voted before and that's why I'll vote no tonight or in October.
I thought it was crystal clear that people were explaining the reason, not you, but Steve and Penny in particular, were explaining the reason for their vote. It doesn't change the fact that we voted on his candidacy and we voted it down. But, and it doesn't change the fact that he's still a pending nominee. Um, I, I don't see any obstacle for us voting, you know, because I think, I think there may be a change in the vote.
Yeah.
But not, but I, but I'm not, but I'm not advocating tonight. Because.
Are you willing to vote tonight, Tom?
Well, it depends how we vote on this motion. If we, if we vote on the motion, we should vote tonight.
I mean, Hillary made it very clear what her stance was and I really appreciate it. And she articulated amazing, uh, the position of what transpired to leading us up to this. And I appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, awesome. Um, uh, I think Kim did an unbelievable job and, and, and stating her stance. I'm asking you, like, you're making those comments. Would you be willing to vote tonight?
If the council holds a vote tonight, yes, I'll vote.
Okay.
We have.
Maria, can you restate your motion so we can get this over?
Why don't I, can I just resend it? If we're gonna vote tonight, I, uh, the motion within the motion, my motion, I'll, I'll withdraw.
Then I move that we table this until the next meeting.
Second.
Me. Oh, who's second?
Uh, Hillary and then Mark.
Mark?
Yeah.
I think we've discussed this too. Yeah.
Well, we have, but we, to be fair to the public, to be fair to the public and the fact that we've talked about this, you know, I, I still fall back to the fact nine thirty at night is not the time to be doing this.
So do we vote on Hillary's motion before we get to?
Well, discussion. No, there's a motion to table.
Motion to table. Also tell, to table.
Well, motion to amend Christina's motion.
To table it till October.
Table it till the next town council meeting.
Okay.
I'm confused.
And we will get, and we will get it done in October, but.
Well, you need a vote to, in order to pass it, so.
Okay. All in favor of tabling, tabling the motion currently on the floor? All in favor? That's Hillary, Robin, Tom. What's that? Yeah, I'm, yeah. Yep, Hillary, oh, roll call. Okay, go ahead. Hillary.
Yes.
Uh, Kim.
No.
Robin.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Steve, no.
No.
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. Now, Mark.
Yes.
No.
Christina's no.
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 And Luke.
No.
And Rita.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So what do we have there?
Yep. One, two, three, four, five, two, six.
Four, five, six. Yes, that's one, two, three, four, five.
All right, so it's tabled. All right.
Tom, you were yes or no?
I, I didn't, I should have commented before the vote. I'm, I've, I voted to table with the understanding that it will be voted on in October. So yes, I said, I, I agreed to table it in the interest of open disclosure. A little uncomfortable that it's on the, uh, you know, that it wasn't on the agenda. Uh, commenting on, on the affordable housing vote, uh, it's, it's, to me, that was a different type of a, of.
I thought that was totally different. I mean, we were separating both of them, but I think.
Yeah, I think it's different.
Productive meeting.
Yeah.
Everyone here has put a lot of time and energy into this and, um, I, I, I think, um, everyone seems very excited to move forward and this.
All right. So moving on, committee reports, files and ordinances.
Nothing new to report that I can.
We had a quiet month.
Nice. How about, uh, education?
I just want to say that Rita and I have been asked and we're thrilled to do it, uh, to participate in a collaborative process with the Board of Education on something called Portrait of the Graduate, uh, which is now unique to New Canaan. This has happened in other communities, I think probably around the country. And it's, it's, it's an effort, um, over, with, with multiple meetings to, to try to define sort of the ideal outcome in terms of values and attributes of, of the graduate, uh, uh, through our program. And, and it's, it sounds to me like a very worthwhile exercise. And so we're, we're gonna be, we're gonna go to like four or five different meetings and participate in that as representatives of town council and of the community.
Great. Thank you for doing that. Anything else? All right, finance and government, Mark, Maria.
Nine thirty, we're good.
Okay.
Oh, can we just think about adding finance and government? Can we think about adding to the agenda, maybe an update on ARPA and what's left? If there are any updates from who received ARPA funds beside, I know we get a lot from Silver Hill, but.
Yeah, not, not, nothing has been updated since the last number, but I don't have that number. I'll just, we'll forward it.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Because yes, we haven't talked about it in a while. There's less than yeah, I was gonna say four hundred.
And what's the deadline for spending it? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry.
On that point, let me just mention, the Board of Finance discusses their, at their meeting in July. And, you know, funds revert to the general fund if they're not expended. So I think there's a, a sense of some that there's no more.
There's always been a desire, right?
Right.
Not unreasonable.
All right, Health and Human Services, Kim just left. Um, Penny is not here, so we'll skip that one. Infrastructure and Utilities, Christina?
No updates.
All right, Land Use and Rec, Robin.
Um, Parks and Rec actually meets tonight. So just in case anyone's wondering, they meet at Lapham now. Uh, they don't meet at Town Hall anymore. So since it's like just a quick, on conservation, uh, Bristow, the fourth phase is out to do, uh, out to bid. Those bids come back the twenty first. And the other thing is a, the flexi pave walk from the parking lot to Bristow. Uh, the one going up the great hill and the one going down, uh, looks, is being worked on. And the other thing is that on September seventh, uh, Tiger Man received approval from the state of Connecticut from a sidewalk from Park Street to Bristow entrance on Old Sanford Road as well as pull off for four cars. And that's gonna, the work is gonna start in the winter. That's it.
Great. Thank you very much. Public safety, we've spent a lot of time on that. Rita, Mike, anything?
No, not very.
And the library project, uh, obviously you guys have seen the green and everything that's going on over there. Nineteen thirteen was moved, um, and they're grading, um, the property, they're gonna be planting. And, uh, the stone wall on Cherry Street will be, uh, installed over the next couple of weeks, hopefully. Stone is on site, so it's gonna look great. So that's really moving along nicely. And that is it. Anybody else have anything? All right. So we will be back here. It is, uh, nine thirty two, so we need motion adjourned. All right. So we will be back here. It is, uh, nine thirty-two, so we need a motion adjourned.
Almost, oh, you go ahead, Maria.
Maria, Hillary seconds. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Rita. Have a good night.